Okay, I'd like to bring the town of Wapanger zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Roll call please be.
Mr. Delacour?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Galardi?
Here. All right, first order of business tonight, acceptance of the minutes from June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Everybody have a chance to review?
Yes.
Any changes?
No.
All right, you have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Motion to accept as written.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. Next on the agenda, public hearing. Appeal number two-three-seven-seven-nine-six. Area variance, Sean M. Adams. Seeking an area variance section two-forty-thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty slash eighty zoning district where fifty feet to the rear property line is required, the applicant can provide twenty-seven feet for the installation of a fourteen-foot by thirty-foot above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of twenty-three feet. The property is located at thirty-eight Red Hawk Hollow Road on one point zero zero acres and is identified as tax grid number six-three-five-nine-zero-two-seven-nine-five-five-four-four in the town of Wapanger. Can I have a motion open?
Motion open to public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Mr. Adams?
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
For the benefit of the board and anybody else listening in, just a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Uh, yes, I'm looking for a variance for the rear property line, twenty-three feet for the installation of a pool.
Got it, and we were out to your home this past weekend. Uh, we were all there, so we also see, saw what you got going on. You got some topography to deal with in the backyard, to say the least, right? And, um, and I believe too now, from, from your original application, that we decreased the variance slightly, right, because you shifted the pool a little closer to the house?
Yeah, a couple.
Got it. Maybe real quick, I'm looking here, right, and you got, you got well and septic to deal with as well, uh, back there. I mean, you had everything marked out when we got there, answered all questions when we were at the site. All right, if you guys have any other additional questions for Mr. Adams?
I don't.
I, I don't.
Nope.
Let me re, re really see what you got, you know, you're up against there. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak on or about this application? Any questions? Okay, so we have a motion then please to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, could I have then a motion to grant or deny the applicant a variance?
I'd like a motion to grant the variance. Uh, you really have no other location that would, would work for a pool. Uh, you could put it aside yard, but then it essentially appears though it's in your front yard, which I think is a worse condition. Benefit can be achieved by no other feasible means, there's no undesirable change in the neighborhood. Request is verging on substantial. No adverse physical or environmental effect, and the difficulty is self-created.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Can I have roll call please be?
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Galardi?
Yes. Okay, so your variance has been granted.
Right.
And you're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next up on the agenda, appeal number two-three-seven-seven-nine-seven. Area variance, Eileen Magnata. Seeking an area variance section two-forty-thirty-seven of district regulations in an R twenty zoning district where twenty feet to the side right property line is required, the applicant can provide eight point six feet for legalization of an existing hundred-and-eighty-six-foot screen-in porch, thus requesting a variance of eleven point four feet. The property is located at forty-eight DeGarmal Hills Road on one point zero zero acres and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-eight-zero-two-seven-seven-seven in the town of Wapanger. Could I have a motion please to open the public hearing?
Motion open to public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. So, for the benefit of the board, if anybody listening in state please your name, and I understand you're representing Ms. Magnata, right?
Yes, I am. My name is Sally Lillian Moynihan from Coldwell Banker Realty.
Gotcha.
I'm the agent for the sale of the property. And as you've stated, they're looking for an eleven point four-foot variance.
Variance.
For the screened-in porch.
Right. Yeah, we, we were at the house, we, uh, saw the porch, it was going on. Uh, we understand and saw pictures. We, there was somewhat of a question whether the, the dimension that we were given, right, was to actual screen-in porch or to the steps that came out from the screen-in porch. And looking at the survey, it was pretty clear that, that dimension was to the screen-in porch and not the steps. So we had, uh, let Ms. Magnata know that, you know, the variance is going to be to the screen-in porch and not the steps. So we, we received the pictures that she sent, that, that the steps were removed.
Perfect, okay.
So we, we got that. So there's a little bit of a caveat, right? Uh, the variance we can vote on tonight, and we will do that, uh, but with the steps being removed, she may have some other issues she needs to deal with with the building department.
Right.
But it won't affect our proceeding tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
She, can I, can I say something?
Sure, yeah.
She was told that she would need to block off with a two-by-four, I have a photo here.
Right.
The steps that were removed and the two-by-four that was placed so that nobody could enter or exit from that area.
Right. We, we, we see, we got those pictures.
Oh, you did, perfect, okay.
Yeah, we, we saw it, that's fine. But again, she's just gonna have some other things she's gonna need to deal with at the building department. So, I mean, guys, we, we were out there, we saw what she had, everything was pretty much marked out, we know what's going on as far as the variance is concerned. Anybody have any other questions for the applicant? Yeah, I think, uh, pretty straightforward from when, from when we were out there. Anybody in the audience have anything to comment on, any questions, concerns? Okay. Think I have a motion please to close the public hearing?
Motion close public hearing.
All right, can I have a motion then to?
I'll second, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't second that, did I? On favor?
Aye.
I'm moved.
All right, now, could I have a motion please to, uh, grant or deny the applicant a variance? I will make a motion to grant the applicant a variance. Uh, I don't think that benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means. Does not create any undesirable change or character to nearby properties. Whether the request is substantial, I don't think so. Whether the request will have any adverse environmental effects, it will not. Is the, uh, difficulty self-created? Yes, it is, but I am, uh, not inclined to deny the variance on that basis alone. So I am making a motion then to approve the variance as written.
I'll second.
All right, roll call please be.
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Galardi?
Yes. All right, so the variance is granted, but Ms. Magnata should check in with the building department.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, appeal number two-three-seven-seven-nine-one. Area variance, Caesar Barzelo. Seeking an area variance section two-forty-thirty-seven of district regulations in an R twenty zoning district where fences in the front yards can have a maximum height of four feet, the applicant is requesting a height of six feet along two streets, thus requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence along Roberts Road and Spook Hill Road. The property is located at fifteen Spook Hill Road on one point zero three acres and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-seven-zero-one-zero-zero-three-nine-two-four in the town of Wapanger. Can I have a motion please to open the public hearing?
Motion open.
So I make a motion open to public hearing?
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Okay, so for the record, state your name and, and your, your relationship to the applicant.
Yep, my name is Edwin, um, I'm just the business partner.
Gotcha. And again, for the audience and anybody listening in, the board, again, exactly what you need and why you need it.
Sure. So, uh, it's a twofold, so we're looking for a six-foot fence. Um, we already have a portion that's already up, um, facing a main road in the front of the property, um, and we're looking to, on Spook Hill Road, to have an open fence following until the edge of the, uh, main structure, and then along Roberts Road, it's supposed to be a closed wooden fence, um, pretty much along that road. That's, that's it.
Now, we, we, we've been out there a couple of times. And, uh, see what's going on there.
More than a couple of?
Give them a couple of times. See what you got going on there. Now, just, just a, a, a couple of things, I know we, we wanna, we might have mentioned we did receive a, uh, an email from, from a neighbor, and we are getting a number of complaints about just kind of, uh, the way that the property is being kept, you know, only say trash, debris, that kind of stuff. Seems like a, like contractor's yard kind of a thing. And I, I know the building department is going to probably speak to you about that and, and cleaning that up, all right? Uh, as far as a variance goes, um, you know, we, we can vote on that tonight. I know we have, we have some concerns over the six-foot fence. Going along the, 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 the six-foot fence that is up, um, you know, we're, we're inclined to let that stay as is.
Okay.
However, I mean, I'm gonna speak for myself, the other guys can, can chime in as well. As far as the, the rest of the fence along Spook Hill Road goes, uh, I'm inclined not to grant the six-foot fence, but a four-foot, 'cause it's a pretty high berm already. Uh, as far as Roberts Road is concerned, that you're kinda in a depressed air, the grade's kinda depressed in that area anyway, I'm inclined to, uh, grant the six-foot fence on that side, but, but not the front side. If you guys have any other questions too or concerns?
I just, one, I just want to clarify.
Sure.
When, is the four-foot fence along Spook Hill connect to the six-foot, four-foot fence on Roberts Road?
No.
There'll be an open space there, okay?
Yeah, that corner where the stop sign is, like, there would not be any fencing there, no. Um, where we had the tape when you guys came, like, that would be like the edge of the house.
Right. Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so there'll be a gap between the two.
Yeah, that's what, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And it sounds like we, we discussed that there's gonna be a gate put in at any point, and it sounds like there was, uh, you were unsure, you know, if, if we do vote on this, you know, you wouldn't be able to put in a six-foot gate, obviously, right? It would be four and under unless you want to be here again.
Yeah, I mean, as of now, there's no plans for that, so I can't, um, give an answer of a yes or no to that. But obviously, if that's a thought down the road, then, you know, we'll do it again and we'll see each other again.
I would, I would think if, if there is that, that thought down the road, if you're gonna do that, and it's in the front yard, right, I mean, if you were gonna, if you were thinking about a six-foot, you're gonna be back here again, right?
About the existing six-foot fence in the front, when that was installed?
Uh, we installed that in the end of February, beginning of March.
So this year, so?
Correct.
Four, four months ago. Right, and you had no permit that time?
No, there was no permit. We didn't know that it changed. Um, I was made aware later in November, I think, is when the code changed.
And also, we did notice that you complied with removing the, uh, wall? The two walls that came from the edge of the driveway column there. Thank you.
All right, good point, Tom.
Can, can you give us a general idea on your guys' timeframe for this property? Because it seems like there is a, you know, you're renovating the house, there was a lot of debris in the depressed portion in the back. Like, do, do you have a notion of, of when, you know, 'cause a lot of the comments were going, is that the site has been messed for a long time? Like, do you have a notion of, of how much longer this is gonna be under construction?
Well, um, I mean, in the beginning, there was like a, a delay in, in terms of like the permits and like the whole process, so, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get started where we wanted to, 'cause initially, we wanted to obviously start in the house and then move on to the other structure and the rest of the property, but we've had to modify, you know, our game plan. But in terms of timeline to finish, I mean, we would like at least the house to be done before winter, um, but if not, like, at least by early next year.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the focus has been a lot of landscaping, so you guys are moving on the house.
Yeah, like, now we're on the house, yeah, we have, like, the permit, we had, um, inspection the other day, so like, we're, we're moving on the house now, like, the focus is on that.
Okay. And, and the garage has been done up, looks like, very nicely? It, it's clear to you guys that that can't be a separate apartment?
Hmm, we know.
Good.
So, just on the record, um, we have gotten complaints of the way the property is being ma, lack of maintaining, so I'm putting you on record today that you have a week and we're gonna come back out. You need to get rid of the trash, you need to clean up, there's no reason to have everything strewn away, and behind you, that neighbor is looking at the back of that and everything you've tossed. So you need to spend a day going back there with whoever's helping you, and, and spend a day cleaning it up, so the neighbors don't have to look at that.
Sure.
I mean, we could see it in one of the pictures that we have, just, it's kinda difficult to see maybe from that distance, but right?
Yeah, it's like right there, that's where we were, yeah.
Large pile of trash there.
I'm sure you know what we're referring to. Okay, so, now, anybody in the audience have any comments, concerns, questions? Could you just come to the microphone and state your name and address, please?
Sure, hi, Delia Engstrom, I live at twenty-one Spook Hill Road. Um, I was before you guys previously when they came for a variance on a front porch, uh, close to Spook Hill Road. Um, you know, as you guys have addressed, it's pretty much a constant disaster over there. The things they have tried to do have sometimes worked, the delay in the work being done, as you know, they started without permits, blew the gas line, roads were shut down, built a beautiful wall, had to take it down. The trash has been there since April. This is not like, oops, we didn't take out the trash this week. This is porta-potties at the edge of the road, piles of trash, debris being thrown on the neighbors who live behind them, who are not me, that is their property line. Plantings being cut down that were not theirs, there is just an utter disregard for the neighbors, the fact that you are part of the neighborhood, you are not on your own in the county, on a ton of acreage. In regards to tonight's variance on the fence, um, I just moved back to the area two years ago, but I did grow up on Roberts Road, learned to drive on that road. It is a tough turn to turn onto from Spook Hill Road. You are constantly looking down Roberts Road, gauging if cars are coming up, they have a tou, tough time pulling out, gauging traffic coming in the other direction. I would really like, uh, as much eyes on that fence going in as possible. Uh, I'm sure there's some sort of, I don't know what it was, Article Five, Section two-forty or two-fifty about line of sight.
Of sight distance, yeah, correct.
And stuff, um, you know, like, a fence to hide the mess sounds great, but I feel like we're really getting way ahead of, like, if you haven't kept up with everything that you've been doing, why are we worrying about a fence? Take care of the mess that you've made. And then, if we think that, you know, things are going along great, and you've made these amends and the property looks better, sure, let's put up a fence, but you're not letting anyone in the area believe that this is gonna be a fence that's going to, like, be maintained and add any kind of value to the property. The trees that have been cut have been there, the piles of mulch have been there, the broken windows have been there, the trash has been there, the porta-potty, the fence, permit or otherwise, the, uh, birds, chickens, exotic birds, something, the owner of the property presumably living in the garage, because there is, I don't know, four or five work trucks, no plows there all the time, looks like he's in there all night long. It's just, it's not a good situation. I'm sure they're lovely people, it's not a personal attack, they are just doing a horrible job at this place, and I would really ask that you guys not approve things that they have no business in having at this point in time.
Yeah, you're totally understood, and it's subject, as far as like the sight distance goes, they, they have to maintain that, and the, 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 the location of the fence, right, is gonna, is gonna, as it, as it approaches Roberts Road, is gonna terminate shorter Roberts, and the fence that goes down Roberts is down the hill ways and then starts, right? So the, so the, basically the radius of the turn, there's no fence there at all, that's gonna remain there. And so they, they do have to maintain the sight distance, and the building department has to too, but they do do that. As far as the trash and debris is concerned, we have heard Ms. Verberi say, we're gonna give the, the, you know, the applicant a week to clean it up.
Yeah.
And then if they don't, then they'll start getting fined.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's well overdue, it's been fifteen, sixteen months of, you know, construction site is one thing, we've all lived by them, people come, you build something, but you don't just continually leave your trash, a house under tarts, buckets everywhere, garbage everywhere, you don't get to just keep making a mess and not clean up after yourself.
I got it, understood. And also, to make a stipulation too, as far as a cleanup is concerned, the portage on, you guys can move that, so it's at basically the line of sight of everybody, it's kinda right in the middle of the driveway there now, you're sliding it over, so, you know, everybody's not looking at it, kind of a thing, so you don't have to see that.
Yeah.
Barbara, it's a quick question for you. As far as the ruling on the variances, um, I'm inclined to, uh, maybe, maybe postpone that ruling to the following meeting to make sure that the applicants comply with the cleanup rule. I mean, is that something we can do?
Sure.
Okay.
That's within our limits.
Uh, I, 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 I think that you guys are, you know, thinking out loud, thinking of if we would, if we close the public hearing, but we would then just postpone the decision to the following meeting? Procedurally, right?
Right.
Okay, I'm, if, if you guys are all in, in agreement with that?
Resurrecting the.
And I, I think that may, may help out expedite things a little bit.
Can't we just adjourn the public hearing out to the next?
Well, we, we?
Why, why should we close?
Should we adjourn, adjourn the public hearing, or we can close the public hearing?
Why should we, why should we close it? Why don't we just adjourn?
I would adjourn it to the next meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, so then what we'll do then, and we're gonna make a motion to adjourn the public hearing, go ahead.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
Do you have chickens there?
Right now, uh, I have chickens.
Well, you're there every day, so you know you have chickens.
No, I just, no, we have birds.
I know you have birds inside the garage.
But I don't know if they're still there, so I, I wasn't.
How big is this property?
One acre.
Okay, so when you go there tomorrow, if you have chickens, they can't stay, you need two acres in the town. Okay, exotic birds that are kept in the house, taken out on your patio, that's, that's a pet, but you can't have the chickens. And I've heard from quite a few neighbors, you have a lot of trucks there. What kind of trucks are they? Are they for a landscaping business?
They're Ford, uh, Ford trucks, they're regular Ford vehicles.
But are they landscaping trucks? You can't run your business from that property?
They're not landscaping vehicles.
There's no plows, there is.
There's no plows there, yeah.
Okay, you can't have commercial, all these commercial vehicles there, so if that's your intention to have them there on your property, you're going to have to find somewhere to keep them.
But right now, we're working on the house, so I can.
But you're not using?
Not selling snow.
Snowplows right now. And this is a problem that the neighbors are upset about, because you, you have commercial vehicles there that are not intended for a private, one-family neighborhood. So unless they're working somehow connected to the construction of the house, they have to be removed. Okay? And this board is going to put this off a month, so you have thirty days from today. You have a week to clean the place, that's on me. You have till you come back to do something with the, the, all the construction vehicles. And in a week, I don't want to see chickens either, okay? So go back to the owner, your partner, and explain that.
Just the vehicles, I mean, we use them, the vehicles we're not gonna get rid of, we use them to bring equipment, you know, that we need to do the work of the house, so, you know, we kind of.
But if they're your day-to-day vehicles, they shouldn't be parked.
They're not day-to-day vehicles, the other ones are not there, we have other vehicles that we use. These are just the ones that.
We're gonna do a site visit, and we'll see what kind of vehicles are there, and then we'll have that discussion on site.
Sure.
Do we have any rules about exotic birds? Like, what constitutes exotic birds? Like, what are you allowed?
They have parrots or things in their house.
That's a house, that's a garage, is that?
You know, they're gonna be, that's the other thing, there has been some discussion about somebody, your partner, or you living in the garage, no one should be there overnight. It's a garage, it's not a living thing. I know I've seen pictures of your birds in there and a bed, so, bed, bed can't be there anymore.
A raised in the house.
I know, but that, but when I see a bed, I assume someone's sleeping in it, so then remove that, so when I come out, I don't see that, okay?
So we're not talking like peacocks? Right? Talking about small birds in the house, not, not just random birds running around.
They have to fit under the, they have to fit like a farm animal. If they're not a farm animal, then you really can't control like a duck, but those type of birds would tend to leave anyway, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, 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 so thank you.
I appreciate it, and it's an unfortunate situation, and.
Sure.
No, nobody in the immediate area wishes was going on, but, um, it is, so.
Gotcha, but thank, no, thank you for the comments.
Appreciate the attention.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm guessing you have something to say? Please, your name and address, please.
My name is Beth Devine, and I am in forty-seventh Spook Hill Road.
Yes.
And I just want to ask one question, I thought I heard the gentleman say that it was an open fence in the front, or is this a closed?
Correct, it's an open fence.
Like a split-rail fence? What's an open fence?
No, how can I best describe it? You'll have a, a slot, and then a gap, and it's almost like a picket fence, like, like your white picket fence.
There, there is, you're obviously aware, there's a high berm, so it's four feet, it's gonna be way up there.
That's correct.
Um, and it, you, there's a historic, there was a historic stone wall there. As a neighbor, I'm very concerned, uh, when people drive down Spook Hill, it looks like a disaster, and putting up a fence is just covering that up. It has been this way, I, I don't want to repeat what Delia has said.
Sure.
But it should not be, and I know that some of the work they've done is really very nice, but there are many trucks there, and they are there long periods of time, and there is equipment, plows and things in the back, so my concern is, a fence is just hiding what's happening back there, what is really going on?
Right, and, and to, to your point, you know, it's one of the reasons why we're the most likely gonna stipulate that it's four-foot and it's open, right, so you, you can, yeah, but basically to see over it or see through it. And then the building department, as you heard Barbara, uh, Ms. Verberi say, that we're gonna be checking in periodically. be checking in periodically.
Yeah, the, the, the four-foot fence they're proposing from the driveway basically to the, to the end of the house, so it's not...
I'm sorry, say that.
The, the four-foot fence that they're proposing, or the six-foot fence, open fence that they're proposing is from the driveway to the end of the house, so it's not, it's not the full length of the property line.
Not the full length. But it, it's still, it's covering up.
Yeah.
Sure.
What is happening behind.
And that house, it's just a person, like, that's not a home.
And this, and, and the house, of course, is lower, so you've got a fence that's coming up almost to the roof line.
Yep.
Um, anyway.
Right.
There are a lot of people on Spook Hill that are concerned.
No, I appreciate it, appreciate you stepping up to the mic.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, so I, I am going to, if there's any more comments, anybody else in the audience? Well, I, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting, which is most likely gonna be the end of July.
July twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
July twenty-fifth?
July twenty-fifth.
It's not one of the meetings we're gonna be casting, right?
No. Let's be the ones we'll be keeping, right? Right, so we're gonna make a motion then to adjourn the public hearing to the July twenty-fifth meeting. You had some homework to do and some information and some things you need to do with Barbara. And Tom Second, who in favor?
Hi.
So moved. So you're on again for the twenty-fifth, but you got some things you gotta take care of, right? Okay? All right, we'll see you on the twenty-fifth. You got it.
Thank you.
Next up tonight. It's a discussion, appeal number two-three-seven-seven-nine-eight, area variance, thirty-three, Middle Bush Road, seeking an area variance, section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations and an R forty slash, I'm sorry, R twenty slash forty zoning district, where seventy-five feet to a county road front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide twenty-nine feet for the reconstruction of a dilapidated building structure for contractor storage, thus requesting a variance of forty-six feet. Where fifty feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide thirty-nine feet for the reconstruction of a dilapidated building structure for contractor storage, thus requesting a variance of eleven feet. The property is located at three-three Middle Bush Road, on a total of one point seven five acres and is identified as tax grid number six-one-five-seven-zero-one-three-nine-six-eight-three-seven point eighty-seven acres and six-one-five-seven-zero-one-four-one-four-eight-four-zero-point-eighty-eight acres in the town of Wapungger. Okay, so, for everybody's benefit, your name and, and address and...
Sure, serial number, um, Troy Wojcikowski, I'm the engineer for the applicant.
Gotcha.
John Calvella is the applicant, he's up front, uh, to answer any questions that I can't answer for you. The building is the, sorry, John, it's the ugly block building, uh, just east of Town Hall here.
Sir.
Can you turn the microphone off for us?
Sure, yeah, please.
Thank you. Sure. Uh, the, the property is the existing, uh, block building, uh, just down from Town Hall on the north side of Middle Bush Road. This board actually, um, visited this project several years ago.
Yeah.
A use variance was issued by the board, uh, considering that the building would be renovated, uh, in, in place. The project received conditional planning board approval a little over a year ago, I think it was. Um, and in, in the time since, a structural review was done of the building and it was determined that it was too structurally unsound to renovate, so the building has to be, uh, removed and we're proposing to build it in place. Um, and so that's what triggers coming to your board for the area variances. Uh, as you noted, the, we're here for a front yard setback, uh, because Middle Bush Road is a county road, the setback is seventy-five feet. The existing building is twenty-nine feet from the street, so we're requesting a forty-six foot variance, uh, for the front yard setback. Uh, the rear property, the rear of the property, butts, uh, Wapungger's Junior High, and that rear yard setback is fifty feet and the existing building is thirty-nine feet. So we're requesting eleven foot variance to get to that thirty-nine, uh, foot rear yard setback. We submitted photographs and of course, the application runs through, uh, all of the tests that the board has to consider, uh, in issuing, um, these variances. Uh, I'm not gonna go through each one of them, but in summary, um, I guess we can focus on will it, uh, create a, a negative impact to the, to the neighborhood. Um, it's an existing building and, uh, obviously aesthetically, it's gonna be much of an improvement to the, uh, to the neighborhood because of, um, us removing that building and, and constructing a nice building. The use is gonna be a low-impact, um, structure, which I think was basically stipulated in the use variance that, uh, your board issued, uh, a few years ago, it's gonna be contractor storage. Uh, so we currently have a, a site plan application before the planning board, um, 'cause again, removing the building rather than renovating it in place kinda opened up a mini can of worms on us. As you know, Middle Bush Road, it consists of basically mix, mixes of uses, uh, there's residential properties, there's commercial, there's, um, emergency, uh, facilities, of course, WAP Junior, it's a restaurant down the road. Um, so it really is, I guess, in keeping with that mixed, uh, mixed use, uh, of properties. I actually prepared a, um, a handout, which I didn't submit, which if I could approach the board and hand these out. Thank you.
So you're essentially, excuse me, maintaining the footprint?
Correct.
The existing building?
We're gonna build it in the same exact footprint, yeah. So the, the, um, Google Maps image I just handed out basically points out to, um, again, consistency with the neighborhood, there's various properties adjacent to this property and down the street where buildings are, you know, very close to the street. So this, it's, it's not an oddball as far as that goes in the neighborhood. Um, there was some discussion with the planning board, if we do have to demolish it, can we reorient it on the site? Um, there's many restrictions on the site that don't permit us to do that. Um, there's basically one area on the property that's suitable for the septic system and that's in the front, uh, front corner up along Middle Bush Road. There's wetlands on the west side of the building and there's wetlands in the northeast corner of the property. So with all those restrictions and setbacks for the, the well that we have to put in, the, uh, septic system for our building and then the adjacent wells and septic systems, the best place for that building is basically to stay where, where it's at. Um, that's all I have really, the board has questions for me.
Tim, it's a, I'm gonna ask you actually a question for Barbara. So Barbara, they're maintaining the footprint of the existing building because they're starting new, they need these variants. Gotcha.
And I did see, uh, we did receive today, I think, the, um, input from county planning that it's a local jurisdiction on this, they don't have any comments on it.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Do you have any additional drawings of, you know, elevations of the building that we could see?
We do have those, I don't have them with me tonight, um, but we can certainly provide those for the public hearing and for our next submission.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be nice to see as well.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly do that.
You could send them out before too, if you want to be or Barb and they'll get them to us.
I'm sorry?
If you want to send the drawings in sooner than the public hearing to get them to us so we...
Oh, sure.
Could look at them, you could do that also.
Yeah, I'll definitely do that, yeah.
And then it would give us a chance to get a peek at it too, before the, before the public hearing. Cause we are, we are gonna be out.
The front of the building has a, a, a sign and a, a drawing on that, on that sign of the building, is that what it's gonna look like?
That's about what it's gonna look like, yeah. So I could steal the sign and bring that in if...
All right, any other questions, you guys?
No.
Yeah? Do we wanna do, you know, if a, if a site visit would actually be necessary, right? I mean, but we, it's been quite a while since we've been there. You probably could do...
It's up to you.
You could do a site visit.
Same footprint, right?
Yeah, same footprint. Yeah, you guys, what do you guys think?
I think we probably should.
Yeah, I think it's been, it's been a while since we've been out there, so we'll do, well, we'll do, we'll do a site visit the Saturday before the twenty-fifth.
July twenty-second.
Which is July twenty-second, thank you, that was coming, didn't it? Yeah, so we're gonna do a site visit on July twenty-second.
Would you like me to be there or John or necessary?
I don't know, really, I, I mean, it, pretty, everything's pretty much there, I mean, so you really don't need to be, I don't think.
Okay.
Somebody will get a good feel, we know that you're gonna be the exact footprint basically.
Right.
So we really don't know, I don't think we really need you there.
Okay.
Are, are you maintaining the foundation or is that being ripped up, new foundation?
That's being ripped up as well, that was one of the key things that couldn't be salvaged.
Okay, so we'll do a site visit on seven-twenty-two, we'll be there around nine o'clock, but like I said, you guys really don't need to be there.
Okay.
Uh, we'll schedule the public hearing then for the July twenty-fifth meeting. And if you could get those, you know, elevations to us prior to that to Barb, that'd be great.
Not a problem.
Okay, I think that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, next up on the agenda is discussion, appeal number seven, I'm sorry, two-three-seven-seven-nine-nine, area variance, Julius Morton, seeking an area variance, uh, section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations and an R twenty zoning district, where forty feet to the rear property line is required, the applicant can provide twenty-seven feet for the construction of a sixteen-foot by thirty-two-foot in-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of thirteen feet. The property is located at twelve Fox Hill Road on one point zero zero acres and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-seven-zero-one-four-zero-three-eight-two-zero in the town of Wapungger. Okay, how are you?
Good, good evening, everyone.
Please hear your name and address, please.
Julius Morton, I'm the residential property owner at twelve Fox Hill Road.
Gotcha.
Uh, my, myself, my wife are looking to construct a sixteen-foot by thirty-two-foot in-ground propane heated pool. However, um, where forty feet, uh, is required to the rear of the property line, we can provide twenty-seven, uh, thus we are requesting a variance of thirteen feet.
Gotcha.
And I may, uh, add that the, at the rear of the property, butts, uh, uh, property owned by the town, there's no residential neighbor behind us.
Behind you.
Correct.
Gotcha, and it looks like, like when they plan, it looks like you're pretty, pretty tight to the house, where you wanna put it, the proposed location, that's pretty close to the house already.
Yes, it's, it's about in a, a patio that we have.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
The, the pool equipment in the back corner, wha-what is that?
The pool equipment will be filter and a, a heating, uh, system for the pool.
Is that within a structure or like, what is the size of that?
Uh, I have the contractor that will install it.
Wanna come up, Jimmy?
Sure.
And I'll say who you are.
Yeah, just...
Pool company and all that?
Yes, I'm James Hughes from Under the Sun Improvements, uh, we're gonna be constructing the pool. Pool equipment takes up about, um, six by five area.
Basically a concrete pad?
Yes, it's gonna be on pad, and that's where his service is, coming out of that area.
Okay, we don't have any setback requirements for that?
It depends what size, I'll look at it, but if it's, if it's sizable, it should be at least ten feet from the side in the rear.
Well, I don't...
But it, it's low line, right?
Yes, low line.
Yeah, so...
And we can't be near a window, that's the law with the heater.
I would just try to keep it five feet from the property line on both sides.
Okay.
It's easier service anyway.
Yeah, looks like you have plenty of space to do that.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
And that shed is already moved, that says shed to be moved?
Yes, that, uh, that shed was already moved, um, it was inspected by the town, uh, previously. And that permit was, uh, we had, we had applied for a permit for that, it was closed out, successful inspection.
Gotcha.
Mr. Morton, we, uh, we saw your house not long ago, right?
Yes, you were at the property, I believe, back in May?
May, yeah.
Welcome to come back again.
And so you have all those, like you said, that says conservation, it's woods basically behind you?
It is woods, correct.
What is a prop, proposed stockpile, what does that mean? On the, just curious, in the very back.
Mr. Lynn, who is the architect, he usually submits plans that way, 'cause some people, some towns require where are you gonna put the dirt, we've been through this before, so that's where we're, the dirt'll be till we pull it back.
So that, just, just temporary?
It's all temporary, yes.
As the excavation of the pool?
Absolutely, yes.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think I've seen that on a plan.
And there's no plan to have additional decking around the pool?
No decking, uh, hardscaping.
Yeah, hardscaping, you can do the whole property, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah.
Any other questions, you guys? No? Okay, so we'll do a site visit too, as well, at your place on the twenty-second, about nine-thirty, nine-fifteen, nine-thirty on July twenty-second, come out. Um, yeah, we have a survey, I don't know if the area, if you have any way of identifying the property line, is there any, was it, is it...
Uh, they have copies, yeah, they have the survey.
We have, we, we got survey.
Oh.
Right, I was saying, physically, when we go out there, is there any way we, we'd be able to see that?
There were stakes, uh, put on the property line.
We, we were just there, this is, we were out of Fox Hill.
Yeah, looking at it.
We were just, I mean, we know exactly what the property is, we were there.
We need to have a, have a public hearing.
We're not scheduled tonight?
We're gonna do that.
Maybe we should have the sign up and...
Right, right, we're gonna, we're gonna do the site visit on the twenty-second, schedule a public hearing for the twenty-fifth.
Okay, and, and, and there was a survey done with stakes, uh, property, like stakes that are there?
Yes, yeah. That's existing?
That's existing, yes.
We could see that, okay. Okay, yeah, we have the, the public hearing done on the twenty-fifth.
Now, gentlemen, at this time, you want the public hearing...
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You want the pool, um, laid out at that time or...
It'd be, that'd be great if you could, yeah.
It's easy to do.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
I'll meet with him ahead of time.
Sure, that's fine.
It's just, it's helpful to confirm the dimensions, you know, make sure we're accurate.
One more time, please?
It's helpful to lay it out so we can confirm the dimensions, make sure everything's accurate.
Yeah, maybe I'll tell Larry to do it then.
Who was saying?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna do, we're, we're, we'll do, uh, site visit on the twenty-second and we'll schedule a public hearing for the twenty-fifth.
Excellent.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next. We are, we're going to, Barbara, so we should, uh, make the motion then to go to...
Okay. First, make the motion.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, before we do, uh, get into the next application, we're going to, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to go executive, uh, session and we'll do that.
Attorney-client session.
What's that?
Attorney-client session.
Attorney-client session. Oh, no, you're not, you're, you're fine, yeah.
Second.
You're free, you're free to go. And so we, I made a motion, Tom Second in, all in favor?
All right.
So moved. Do we wanna do that here or do you wanna move?
No, I'll take it in the conference room.
Okay.